This hearing is now called to order. Half a day, the Committee on Culture and Justice is called to order today, Wednesday, October 17, at 9:03 a.m. Notices for this public hearing were disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on October 8 and again on October 15, 2018. Notice was also published in the Guam Daily Post on October 10 and the Pacific Daily News on October 14, 16, and 17. Notice was given for four agenda items, but at the request of the sponsor, one of these bills will not be heard today. So our agenda will consist of the three remaining bills, which are Bills 317, 316, and 311. All of these are introduced by Senator Joe S. Augustine. 317 is an act to repeal and reenact and to add a new MNOPQR to Section 30109 of Title V, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the powers and duties of the Attorney General of Guam. Bill number 316 is an act to add a new Article III to Chapter 30 of Title V, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the ability of the Office of the Attorney General of Guam to copyright and publish legal treatises and other works and to sell the same. Bill number 311 is an act to amend 30106B of Article I, Chapter 30, Title V, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the position of Chief of Staff for the Office of the Attorney General. Bill number 313-34 was removed from the agenda at the request of Senator S. Augustine. So I'd like to acknowledge the presence of Senator S. Augustine and thank him for being here this morning. And thank you also, Madam Attorney General, for being here and your staff and all of you who are here. So we'll proceed with the first item on the agenda, Bill number 317, introduced by Senator Joe S. Augustine. I'm going to call those who have testified to please just come up to the panel. We've got the Honorable Elizabeth Barrett Anderson, Attorney General. There are others who have signed in who did not indicate that they would give oral testimony. I'd like to invite Senator S. Augustine to introduce the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Bill number 317-34-COR, an act to repeal and reenact and to add a new Section MNOPQR to Section 30109 of Title V, Guam Code Annotated, relative to the powers and duties of the Attorney General of Guam. Just some short highlights. The bill permits the Office of Attorney General broader powers and duties as chief prosecutor to investigate and charge all criminal matters without conflict of interest or impediment. It permits the Attorney General to appoint a special prosecutor, expert witness, and certain legal services while going through normal procurement, and in case of a special prosecutor, without the approval of the governor. Ensures that as chief legal officer, the legal position of the Attorney General takes precedence over other legal positions in the government. It gives the people of Guam the assurance that their elected Attorney General has the statutory powers to protect and serve the public interest against any person or group or persons. Allows sole source selection of expert witnesses, avoids time-consuming procurement process, and allows the government to select the highest qualified witness it can afford. It comprehensively defines what the AG is authorized to do. The alternative route entails defining the AG's powers through litigation, a piecemeal and costly process. I thank you for being here, Madam Attorney General.
Thank you. We'll now hear from the Attorney General.
Good morning, Madam Speaker and Madam Chair and sponsor of the bills, Senator S. Augustine. My tenure is coming to a close, and it is with great honor and appreciation that this legislature will consider a piece of legislation that I have even prior to my becoming Attorney General, recognized that was needed post the Organic Act implementation and authorization of an elected Attorney General. Although the United States Congress authorized Guam to have an elected Attorney General, Congress left it to this body, the Guam Legislature, to decide what kind of elected Attorney General would be appropriate for the people of Guam. That's a statutory foundation, and today, I believe, is the first time that this legislature will consider a comprehensive review of what kind of Attorney General that this body believes is needed for the people of Guam in terms of the powers and duties of the elected Attorney General. Madam Speaker, thank you for your kind consideration to hold this public hearing on Bill 317-34, introduced by Senator Joe S. Augustine, to amend Title V of the Guam Code Annotated, Section 30109, relative to the powers and duties of the Office of the Attorney General. In accordance with our strategic plan, which I implemented for a 2015 to 2018 strategic plan entitled "Pathway to Justice," we are committed to strengthening the institutional foundation of the Office of the Attorney General through the enactment of laws which will better define the powers and duties of the elected Attorney General. Bill 317-34 addresses this purpose. I am the fourth elected Attorney General to have had the privilege of serving the people of Guam as chief legal officer. In the decade and a half since we amended the Organic Act of Guam to allow voters to elect their Attorney General, the role of the AG has been defined more so by personality of the individual rather than defined by law. Bill 317-34 seeks to correct that instability by laying the statutory foundation that will guide all future Attorneys General in performing his or her duties for the people of Guam. The Attorney General is no longer just the chief lawyer of a particular state or territory. The Attorney General, through legislation, has become more involved in consumer protection, anti-trust, charitable trust, child support enforcement, victims of crime, environmental protection, human trafficking, crimes against persons of all ages, drug prosecution, and so much more. The Attorney General of Guam provides legal advice to the governor and all territorial agencies through daily guidance, advice, and opinions. The AG represents the government in all litigation, and by virtue of the control of litigation, is in a major strategic position to shape long-term development of the law through careful selection and consistent appellate advocacy. Most Attorneys General observe an obligation to defend the state law against challenge to its constitutionality. In addition to opinions, the Attorney General often review areas of statutory inconsistency or inadequacy, and thereby makes the Office of the Attorney General a preeminent source of statutory reform from the standpoint of public policy and the legislative process. This is an executive position. It is typically the third highest executive position in most state constitutions. Guam's Attorney General position sits precariously outside the executive provisions of the Organic Act. Rather than incorporating the Attorney General within the executive provision of Section 1422 of the Organic Act, Congress instead authorized Guam to have an elected Attorney General. The choice was left to the legislature. This is why we are here today. Only upon the day when Guam announces its desire to establish its own constitution will the people of Guam be truly in control of their elected AG. Bill 317-34 defines the power and duties of the Attorney General as chief prosecutor to investigate and charge all criminal matters without conflict of interest or procurement impediments. It authorizes the Attorney General to appoint a special prosecutor in matters where there exists a conflict of interest in the role of the Attorney General as counsel for the government and the prosecution of government officials. It permits the Attorney General to procure experts as needed in criminal and civil trials. The bill ensures that the legal position of the Attorney General takes precedence over other legal positions in the government. More importantly, the Attorney General is the protector of the public interest pursuant to common law and the laws of Guam. Over the past decade and a half, my predecessors have attempted to define the role of the elected AG through judicial decision. This is not the way to establish the proper foundation for powers and duties. The way to establish a public office is by law. The United States Congress recognized as much when it empowered the legislature of Guam to create the elected Attorney General. Unfortunately, the effort was short shrift, and we are here today to remedy this deficiency. I leave you with the assurance that Bill 317-34 will well serve the next Attorney General of Guam and the people of Guam. I encourage its passage. Thank you for the time to express our support for Bill 317-34. I want to personally thank the sponsor of the bill, the chairwoman, and all members of the committee for your attention and support for the Office of the Attorney General during my tenure. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Senator S. Augustine, if he has any questions or comments. All right. I guess if you don't mind, I'd like to just -- this is a very complex bill, and I want to make sure that the public understands what it is that's happening here. I think it has implications, and you've explained some of these, but if we could just, for example, I have a couple of questions. So one of his -- the bill will expand the powers of the AG and make the position the chief legal officer for the government of Guam. How does this differ? How would this general authority differ than what is currently provided in the law?
It doesn't, Senator. It's just a reclarification and a restatement of what's existing in law currently and what's in the Organic Act. So that statement needed to be reenacted in this bill.
All right. As the chief legal officer, is there any authority that you would be given in this bill that you don't currently have?
Yes. Would you like me to expound the various areas?
Please, or just bullet points?
Okay, the bullet points. I think one of the most clearly understood powers goes to what had occurred early in my administration, dealing with conflicts of interest. Both on the civil and the criminal side, issues of conflict arose. In one situation, because of the role of the Attorney General as counsel for the governor and the government, we needed to procure a special prosecutor in order to review a particular The procurement process was a stumbling block. The bill would allow the Attorney General, just as I would assume Attorneys General throughout the nation and the U.S. Attorney, to appoint a special prosecutor independent of having to go through the procurement process. A situation like that should not be left to procurement. The Attorney General should be allowed to select an attorney with a competence, experience, and background to review any criminal case where the Office of the Attorney General or the Attorney General him or herself has a conflict. And that would apply to both criminal cases as well as civil cases. So I'm not just trying to hone in on the one particular criminal case that most people are aware of. When I came back to public office, I came after 14 years as a judge, and we did have a situation of a conflict of interest on a civil matter. Again, there was nothing in the statute that accounted for that. The reason that there was nothing in the statute, Senators, the existing statute, was developed when the Attorney General was an appointed Attorney General. And over the last 12 years, the Attorneys General who have preceded me have tried very vehemently through taking court challenges, going into court and asking a court to confirm the independent and autonomous power of the elected Attorney General. This was done early on, and I have some cases on page, I believe, page one of my testimony that I invite you or your staff to read. I think one of the most significant decisions was written by former Judge Waken Manabusan. He wrote a 45-page decision of what is this new position called elected Attorney General and what does it mean to Guam. So that was the very first decision that spoke about the role of the elected Attorney General. We've had other decisions come down from the court, however, they have not been as strong as needed because, Senator, the statutes are deficient. That's just one example. Madam Chair, I don't want to go on and on, but you know I could, speaking about the Attorney General.
Yes, let's just take them one by one then. I do want to -- I did want to highlight by itself, the bill asks, well, it provides two things for procurement. One is that the Attorney General be allowed to conduct its own procurement. So that would take its procurement away from GSA. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And the second thing that it does is it allows, in cases of conflict of interest, to change the current procedures where it would no longer need -- be subject to the governor's approval.
Yes.
And it would allow sole source.
Correct.
And then it would be subject to the approval of the Attorney General. Is there any issue there if there's already a conflict with the Attorney General and then the Attorney General is the one who's selecting?
Your question is if the conflict is with the Attorney General, him or herself, how would the special Attorney General be selected? And that would have to be by delegation. If it were a situation that I was involved in, I would recuse because the conflict is with me. Let's say hypothetically, there was a case when I was a judge. I would recuse from it, delegate it down to the chief deputy Attorney General or a deputy Attorney General, and I would be walled off completely from that particular matter.
Okay. What, currently with needing the governor's approval, what is that -- what impediment is that causing? How is it causing an impediment?
Well, if the governor happens to be the subject of an investigation, that's a pretty clear impediment. The other impediment within the executive branch is that currently the financial management of our office is still within the Department of Administration. We are currently proceeding to obtain for the Office of the Attorney General independent financial autonomy. We have not -- we're stepping into that. We've already awarded an RFP for preliminary efforts to be financially autonomous. And once we get to that step, then we would no longer be within Department of Administration. So, Senator, if an invoice comes in from that special prosecutor or special assistant Attorney General, and it's on a stack of invoices and vendors that need to be paid, I'm not quite sure if it's going to be at the top or the bottom of the invoice stack.
All right. But you believe that there's a sufficient mechanism by the designation within the office to avoid the conflict?
Senators, I want you to keep in mind that my four years in tenure, my goal was to strengthen the autonomy and the independence of this office. It's why I sit here today with this piece of legislation. A few minutes ago, I indicated to you that we are seeking financial autonomy so that when the budget is appropriated, that money goes the same way it goes to the judiciary, to the OPA, to the Attorney General, to Department of Education. And right now, the Office of the Attorney General has its own personnel autonomy. And that autonomy is very, very important in the role of the Attorney General in protecting the public interest so that the Attorney General avoids the conflicts of interest, whether they be personnel or procurement that I have and my predecessors have encountered since the position was created in 2000 or 1998.
I'm sorry, I'm going to ask one more on that same topic.
You can ask how many, whatever questions, Madam Speaker.
Back on this, the provision says, "In cases of a conflict of interest rendering it impractical, impracticable, or unethical for the Attorney General himself or herself to represent the government." So it's when there's a conflict with the Attorney General. That's when this special procurement kicks in. The sole source, you can get an independent counsel, and that's when such contract shall not be subject to the governor's approval.
Yes.
So this provision doesn't provide that if there's a conflict with the governor, but it's really if there's a conflict with the Attorney General. So I just wanted to make sure that -- and so it does provide in here that you can designate that, delegate that in office, and you are assuring us that delegating that power in office to select the independent counsel is satisfactory to avoid a conflict that takes care of the interests of the people.
Yes.
All right. I want to recognize the presence of Senator Espaldón. And if I could just, since we're talking about procurement, finish on my questions with procurement, and then I will allow Senator Espaldón. So removing the Attorney General from procurement with GSA, could you please explain to us why that is necessary? Because a lot of the agencies come in here, and everybody wants to do their own procurement, yet we have an entire, you know, chapter of the code dedicated to central procurement and the benefits of central procurement. So could you please explain to us how this is going to benefit the people of Guam to separate the Attorney General away from GSA and allow them to procure, and why we should, if we're going to allow that for the Attorney General's office, not allow that for every agency? How are we going to stem off that demand?
Okay. Well, Senator, I want to make it absolutely clear that I am not recommending to the legislature to exempt the Attorney General's office from the procurement law. Item I of the bill would exempt the agency from GSA, similar to the autonomous agencies. So I want you to look at this as an effort to make the Office of the Attorney General more autonomous and independent, such as a government autonomous agency. We would, under the bill, we would still be required to follow all of the procurement With regard to the appointment of a special prosecutor, we would not be required to go through an RFP or -- but we would be required on a sole source basis to seek our due diligence in selecting an attorney to engage in, whether it's civil or criminal, who has the expertise and the background. So it's not just a situation where the Attorney General is just going to choose anybody or the person delegated by the AG is just going to select somebody with no background or experience. One of the advantages of this bill as an alternative to selecting somebody within the Guam bar, because we have seen in many situations that if it is a high-profile case, the members of our Guam bar may be very hesitant to get involved in the politics of that. This bill allows the Attorney General to seek the services of the Attorney General of the Commonwealth of the Northern Marianas, just as the judiciary of Guam seeks to have judges from the CNMI sit on panels where the judges of Guam are in conflict. I would like to encourage that of the next Attorney General to seek a prosecutor from another jurisdiction, perhaps the Attorney General's office of Hawaii or the Commonwealth of the Northern Marianas. So it's not just an issue, Madam Chairwoman, of a procurement matter, but what are the options to assure that when there is a conflict that we don't have an enormous delay that we have had before and we've seen before? That's completely unnecessary. I'm not quite sure what the United States Attorney General would do if he had to go through an entire procurement process to get a special prosecutor to review the President of the United States.
Okay.
And I'm sure that wasn't through a procurement process.
I want to distinguish between the getting a special attorney or a special assistant attorney, because I think you've been granted that authority already to designate special assistant attorneys general and to -- and then the special case where we talked about, if there's a conflict and you need to go outside the jurisdiction to get, that's also special. But now I'm just asking about the GSA. Why should the Attorney General's office procure pens outside of GSA when we are requiring every agency in the government of Guam to go through GSA to procure its pens, things like that? I mean, I just want to know, you know, because we are relying on the Attorney General to help GSA. With all the issues that all the agencies are facing with GSA, we are hoping, or we have been hoping, it's the Attorney General's office that's going to keep them, you know, on the right path, keep them interpreting the code correctly, and keep them enforcing it correctly. And so I just want to know, why are we going to -- And so I just want to know, why are we going to then take this, this central procurement, and the benefits of central procurement, and separate that office? Like you said, like we do with autonomous agencies?
Well, Senator, you're talking about two different things. I am certainly not suggesting that the Attorney General's office be exempt from procurement, except in the sole situation where we have a conflict of interest and we need to appoint a special prosecutor. It doesn't make any sense to me to go through a RFP process, and this was done previously, and it was entangled in difficulties. This bill would allow, in situations for the appointment of a special prosecutor, to be able to appoint either or request from the Commonwealth of the Northern Marianas or another office of the Attorney General throughout the states like Hawaii, to seek the assistance for the appointment of an attorney from outside of the office.
So you're not asking for exemption from central procurement?
No.
For the office? Okay, so that's how I was interpreting subsection I.
Absolutely not, Senator.
So we'll revisit that. It says to be exempt from the central procurement authority under Article II of Chapter Five of Title V.
I'm sorry, Senator, central procurement, if you're talking GSA, yes.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yes. I don't, with all due respect to the fine people that work down at GSA and to a former colleague of mine that is still down there, the appointment of a special prosecutor does not and should not be relegated to a central procurement office that does not have the expertise to select.
I think the special prosecutor provision is separate. That is a separate exemption that you are requesting, and that's different.
What is your question?
My question is for procurement of all other things. For pens, pencils, the way government agencies procure, do you currently go through GSA? Because the bill looks to me like it is trying to exempt you from GSA for all purchases, not for special prosecutors and those types.
I see, that's your question.
That I totally understand. But yeah, I'm trying to get at, why are we, why are we further, you know, breaking up our central procurement for all other items, non-legal, regular items?
Well, Senator, to maintain the autonomy and independence of this office, much similar and the same as other autonomous agencies, I wish I could answer your question as to how to improve the central procurement processes of GSA. I think we have had some discussion on that, and it is a cumbersome and slow process. Senators, I guess my position is this, if you can't trust the Attorney General of Guam to enforce the procurement laws as an independent autonomous agency, I'm not quite sure what you can trust. The agencies have come to us, this legislature has imposed upon all agencies who are purchasing contracts over 500,000, it's called the Section 5150, go to the Attorney General and seek the Attorney General's support in how to do that RFP. Department of Education comes to our office, how do we do this procurement? Every single government agency, and I respect the position of this legislature to impose that burden on the Attorney General. I am just asking that with all that burden that we be allowed to buy pencils as an autonomous procuring agency and not through GSA?
Is, well, I, we, in prior legislation, the Attorney General was given near, nearly independent control of its financial resources, and you were explaining earlier how you're able now to, I guess, procure services in that area and do it independent of DOA?
Not quite yet. Our payroll, our payment of contracts are still managed by the Department of Administration.
And did this bill change that?
No, this bill would not, because as you said, we have that prior authority. What we need to do is, and we are in, have been in the process of a request for proposal on RFP for a financial system for the Office of the Attorney General. We didn't think it was going to cost that much money. It is going to cost more, so we have, we're going to try and do a phased approach to developing our own financial system. We do have our own independent personnel system, so we don't go through DOA for that. So you're correct. We currently have financial autonomy. We need to develop the process for it.
All right. I'm going to allow Senator Espaldon to question. Do you, would you have, do you have any questions, Senator?
Not right now.
All right, then if I may continue with mine.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. As to conflicts, there have been several news articles where they talk about, they accuse the Attorney General's office of having a conflict in the case, and so this bill would allow you to procure an independent counsel, but does it do anything else to address those types of cases where attorneys general are being accused of conflicts in cases?
Senator, this provision would address the conflicts. Conflicts come in many shapes and sizes, and I am hopeful that the provision in the bill would respond to all kinds of conflicts, whether it's personal with the Attorney General or the conflict in a division or a conflict of the entire office. And so I'm hoping that the conflict provision is sufficient.
All right. It's the conflict, is one example for, I'm basing this on my memory, so I could be wrong, but when there was an accusation that there were illegal pay raises at a loop, I think, was that a case where you tried to procure an independent prosecutor?
Yes, because the question had come to my attention, and I had given a, not an opinion, I'm not quite sure it was an opinion, I think it was legal guidance to the governor, that the pay raises were illegal and that they needed to be paid back, or legislation needed to be enacted so that this one group of people who were excluded, the only group that were excluded from the Competitive Wage Act, that the legislature would also incorporate them into the pay raises. So that became the conflict, because in the civil matter, in the civil arena, I had given the governor my position, my opinion, my guidance. The retros were illegal, they needed to be paid back, or legislation needed to be enacted. So the overriding issue there is that, under the law, retroactive pay is a misdemeanor. I tell a lot of government administrative officers and administrative surface officers, retroactive pay is one of the cardinal rules you don't touch. So in that situation, Madam Attorney General, I mean, Madam Speaker, we needed to procure outside a special prosecutor to be able to review that matter because of the conflict that I had already given to the governor and representing the governor there. Interesting, senators, the role of the Attorney General of Guam as chief legal officer is very comprehensive. The Attorney General is not only the chief legal officer, but also the public prosecutor. There are only about four or five other jurisdictions, I believe, Rhode Island, Alaska, I was just looking at that just the other day, just a handful of other jurisdictions where, under one umbrella, you not only have the Attorney General, chief legal officer for the entire government, but chief prosecutor. And this goes back to the arguments decades ago, two, three decades ago. Should we have an elected prosecutor, district attorney? Should we have an elected Attorney General, et cetera? And I think as this position grows, it's only, it's only 12 years old, I'm sorry, is it 12 years old, 14 years old? It's still a new position. So we need to know, as a territory, is this elected Attorney General position that handles so much of the public interest and the public prosecution, does it work for the people of Guam? Is this the best structure? Or should we have a bifurcated structure? Public prosecutor and an Attorney General? But if you do that, you're going to have to decide what the powers and duties are of each. Madam Speaker, you are asking me some very good questions, and they go to the very heart of the fact that the elected Attorney General, having, also these powers stemming from a previous appointed Attorney General, are all in one position. We now have the Attorney General bifurcated from the governor, it's no longer appointed by the governor, but it doesn't mean that these issues of conflict of interest have disappeared simply because the governor no longer appoints the Attorney General. I knew that these issues would come up. I was sitting on the bench at the time, and I did not see that we, as a territory, responded to developing the foundation and the structure of an elected Attorney General in such a manner that it would work. Madam Speaker, I don't have the answers to everything. A lot of people think I do. What does the Attorney General think of this? I can only say that Bill 317-34 is a start. Now, if down the road, these conflicts continue, these conflicts of interest continue, then maybe this legislature, having been given the power by the United States Congress to establish the elected AG, it also says, a public prosecutor, maybe you need to revisit, is it working or is it not working? I can tell you this, with the current structure, it's not working by going to court and asking a court of law and a judge, what is the elected AG? Because that judge can only look at what's in the statute. So let's get a statute with good foundation, with good statutory construction, so that my successors might be able to take this question in front of the Supreme Court of Guam or the Superior Court of Guam, and argue, the Guam Legislature in a bill called 317-34 gave these powers and duties. The Organic Act authorizes the elected AG. How do you, Judge, define whatever the fact situation is before that judge? And believe me, there will be conflict. There has to be conflict, because conflict will define the role. Without conflict, then we don't know what we have. So Senator, I know I'm kind of going on and on and on, but you see my passion about setting something further in law that we don't have right now?
Yes, I understand that. I'm just trying also to point out in a very practical way that everybody will be able to understand what is the difference in this law, because it's a big difference, and I want to be sure everybody understands that. If, and you're right. So we've got an Attorney General's office on Guam that is our prosecutor, and we are allowing some special arrangements for special prosecutors, which I agree, that's going to be necessary. We're always going to need special prosecutors, perhaps because of conflicts. But we've also got role of Attorney General as prosecutor conflicting with role of Attorney General as advisor to government, right? Advisor to line agencies. For example, the recent, and, and so, and then being also the prosecutor, right? But we've also got this theoretical, or maybe in your case, it's very real, potential conflict of advisor to government agency and protector of the public interest. And that's what this bill, to me, that's the most important part of this bill. This bill is spelling it all out, and those are the cases I think you're referring to, where the courts have said it is the power of the Attorney General to protect the public interest, and it is the duty of the Attorney General to do that. And just how do you do that when you're actually also been advising the government agencies if you think the public interest and the government agencies are in conflict? For example, if government agencies are not abiding by the open government law, right? Are you going to defend them? Or are you going to, you know, represent the public interest and prosecute them even? Or just at least enforce the law, right? Or advise them? Or just different things like that? But there are different roles, and I'm sure this office, it's still developing. Like you said, you're the fourth Attorney General, so I think this bill is a good attempt to try to clear those things up. But I just want to point out that that's a huge thing in this bill. It says that you are the protector of the public interest. You're also supposed to defend the laws of Guam, and you're supposed to defend them against, you know, being found unconstitutional. Yet, you know, we're also issuing opinions that say they are unconstitutional, or they're inorganic, or they conflict with the organic law. And so we've given the Office of the Attorney General, Attorney General, huge powers, I think, to advise the government, and even to say a law is inorganic. For example, the recent opinion regarding the hiring freeze.
Yes.
The opinion was that the law is inorganic, but this bill spells it straight out, that if the Attorney General issues an opinion that says this law is inorganic, then, then no liability, civil or criminal, shall accrue to or against any officer of the government of Guam, its agencies, autonomous instrumentalities, boards, commissions, or public corporations, or public official, who in good faith follows the direction of such opinion and acts in accordance therewith, even where the opinion is later held to be erroneous. That's a huge power. And so I just want to make sure that everyone understands that we're spelling this out in here. And because we trust, you know, and we have to trust our Attorney General, we're trusting them to prosecute us and to do it fairly, and we're also trusting them to enforce the laws fairly, interpret them fairly, and yet, to be the defender of the government, to be the person who ensures that the government gets a fair deal in procurement. Which is why I have concerns with removing the Attorney General from central procurement. Not, because I think you have the ability to be independent with selecting prosecutors, selecting attorneys, personnel, even financial now. But when it comes to procurement, all line agencies are suffering the same thing, you know, with procurement, and I think we need to work together to fix that. And I feel like if there's any benefit at all in central procurement, then we should pursue that. And if there's none for you in central procurement, then maybe there's none for anyone. There's no benefit for anyone in central procurement, and that's really the issue I want to get to. Because I don't think it's a matter of autonomy. I think the bill and prior legislation has given you lots of autonomy to act independent, to act swiftly, and I want to commend you on swift action in many instances, and prosecution, and having, you know, to get special prosecutors when necessary, to get special attorneys general when necessary, and we saw that in the recent case for the, you know, Davis versus Guam, and I want to thank you for that and all your efforts to ensure that that happened timely and everything that needed to be done.
Madam Speaker, can I just say with regard to the procurement, and this goes aside from a special prosecutor, a special assistant attorneys general, one of the areas that is very, very critical to the work of the Attorney General in trial is procuring experts. And in fact, it was just raised to my attention, we have a criminal trial coming up, we need an expert in child psychology to be able to testify at that trial. When we go through procurement, that is very, very, very difficult. Or if we need a constitutional expert to assist us in a civil case such as the Chamorro Land Trust. Land Trust, or any other kind of case. The exemption from procurement with regard to experts to defend and to prosecute for the territory is very, very important. So I'm just throwing that as, as something that I ask you to be very supportive of, if there's any other consideration.
I think that was.
That's throwing us back into GSA.
No, no, we're not throwing you back. We're, we've exempted you from GSA for certain things, such as that, I think, like when, in the recent budget law, there were special provisions that exempt the attorney general's office from many things. The contracts, we have special provisions in here for authorizing contracts with attorneys as independent contractors in areas in which it is impractical, impossible, that type of thing. In the, you're authorized in our recent budget to procure consultants and expert witnesses on a sole source basis, and another, you know, special ability, I think, which is well warranted, to pursue federal litigation for or against Guam, and different things, and in the different cases.
We ask that it be codified and not just every year in a budget law. So thank you very much, Senator. If we can take those considerations the legislature has given to the office of the attorney general in every procurement law by codifying it in Bill 317-34, it's greatly appreciated.
I have one more, one more provision I'd like to just talk about, is that N, subsection N, it says, "To institute an action for declaratory relief as to the validity of any law, rule, or regulation under exclusive jurisdiction before the Supreme Court of Guam." Now currently, the attorney general has the authority and is charged with, you know, defending the laws of Guam, or challenging their constitutionality. But this looks to me to be a provision that would give to the attorney general power that is right now only held by the governor or the legislature, and that is to go directly to the Supreme Court before there is an actual controversy or case, and to get a declaratory ruling on the interpretation of a law, or validity of a law. And so this is, this, this would very much change what is currently allowed, and I guess I just want to hear your thoughts on this.
Senator, you're correct that as we sit here today, the office of the attorney general can seek declaratory relief on any local legislation before the Superior Court of Guam. The reason why we're asking for N is going to be in situations, and I hope they're going to be rare situations, that there's a conflict between the interpretation of the governor and the interpretation of the chief legal officer and the public interest. Now, both the governor and the attorney general, the governor is there to protect and put forth the public interest as a chief operating officer for the territory. And here is the attorney general with this bill, likewise, looking at the public interest. And so is the legislature. This would allow the attorney general to directly go to the Supreme Court, just as the legislature can do, just as the governor can do. So rather than going down to the Superior Court of Guam level, and then having it make its way up to the Supreme Court, this is a situation that which should rarely be used, and should only be used where the position of the attorney general on an interpretation of the law as chief legal officer differs from the governor, or possibly the legislature. I don't think we, I don't think that's, you make the laws, you don't interpret the laws. So it'd be really between the attorney general and the governor on an interpretation of a law. And rather than the long, drawn-out process, let's take, for example, let me give you the same-sex, the same-sex situation. I had to deal with that months upon becoming attorney general. The agency and the governor did not want to permit same-sex marriage. With N being in place, I could have walked right into the Supreme Court of Guam and said, "The prohibition on allowing persons to marry was unconstitutional based on the series of case law in the Ninth Circuit primarily," and we're in the Ninth Circuit. I could have gone into the Supreme Court on that. As it turned out, I issued my opinion, the governor stood firm on his position, and then a few weeks after, the Supreme Court of the United States solved the whole question. But it's in cases like that, senators, and it would primarily be limited to situations that the attorney general and the governor have clear disagreement on. Vice versa, I think the, I think the governor has declaratory authority before the Supreme Court, as this legislature does. It doesn't say who's the defendant. The governor can take the attorney general into Supreme Court for declaratory relief if the next attorney general holds strong on a position that the governor disagrees with. So this gives the attorney general the authority to have an expeditious review by our highest court on issues of grave public concern, and more likely than not, they will be constitutional concerns as well as organic concerns.
All right. Well, I appreciate the distinguishing that this would, this should apply when, when your interpretation differs from that of the governor. And we have seen instances of that, and I wanted to go to M, M also. So it says, M spells out that the attorney general has the authority to represent multiple public interests within the government of Guam, to include public interests among the executive branch agencies, autonomous instrumentalities, boards, commissions, public corps, or among public officials. And so if you could just show us the differences, what happens now and what would happen then? So now, I mean, my understanding is that if you disagree with the governor's interpretation of something, or how you should proceed in litigation, that the governor has been hiring his own lawyer? And what happens in those cases? And what would happen with this bill? How would that change?
I'm not sure I understand the question of the governor has his own lawyer.
Well, does this have any effect on that? On the governor hiring his own lawyer in litigation? For example, the ORDA litigation?
If the governor proceeds to go into litigation, it would be my position as attorney general that no attorney in the territory can represent the government of Guam, and includes the governor, without the approval of the attorney general. In the autonomous agencies is, has been an issue when I came in, and I think it's been an issue with some prior attorneys general. In the Moyland versus Guam Airport Authority, the court said the autonomous agencies can have their own lawyers. This passes, it would be my position, that the autonomous agencies can continue to have their own lawyer. The governor can continue to have his own lawyer. But when it comes to litigation, I think the attorney general has to be able to have control over the legal issues. What would happen would be the attorney general would appoint, provide special assistant attorney general authority to the governor to litigate, or the autonomous agencies. I bring one question, one issue up on the YTK case. The Port Authority of Guam did not coordinate with the office of the attorney general. And it wasn't until very late in the litigation and then to arbitration, the case had come down from the Supreme Court to go to arbitration, that I beat, was now attorney general. And I thought, well, why wasn't the office of the attorney general involved in some very important legal issues involving leasing and contracting, including sovereign immunity? Can the government be sued in this manner? Well, it came late in the game. This law with regard to special assistant attorneys general, I'm not talking about M, so I'm sorry if I'm diverging, but I'm trying to answer your question, would assure that the attorney general has legal control of those, those issues. If for whatever reason, the governor and the government attorney disagree, or an autonomous agency and their board disagree, then the attorney general should go in on declaratory relief. We can go in Superior Court, and this would give us the option to Supreme Court, depending on the importance of the issue, to make sure that the public's interest in the legal question is protected. I'm not certain or sure in YTK whether we could have prevented $14 million arbitration award. I don't know. We are currently in the case as an amicus before the Supreme Court on the issue of sovereign immunity. So the attorney general has to be involved in these important cases. M speaks to a situation where one agency and another agency have a disagreement. And it allows, or one autonomous agency and an executive agency have a disagreement. The ethics involved in the role of an attorney general or an assistant attorney general provide that there will be situations where government agencies have different points of view, and that the attorney general can represent those different points of view. We put M in there in the event of those situations. But I will be very honest with you, senators, that the office of the attorney general in giving advice to multiple agencies, we try to maintain consistency rather than inconsistency. That's one of the reasons why that provision that says, if an agency follows the office of the attorney general's opinion, there's no liability, there's no liability to a director. Director can just stand up there and say, "The AG told me to do this." And then a court of law rules the AG's decision was wrong, opinion was wrong. It protects the employees, because I have often said to employ, to agencies, "You may disagree with my opinion, but if you get sued, you're on your own." So it really provides the coverage, the other provision about no liability to a government employee who follows and abides by the opinion of the office of the attorney general. I hope I've answered that question. I don't have an answer to every fact situation that may come up in the future. I ask the legislature to provide the foundation, so that when those situations come up, there's something to turn to. Senator, I'm not saying that M might not have to be revisited, or might not have a situation where maybe M, maybe M was not as well thought out as I think it is today. But have the foundation there so that those arguments can be made, because right now, the structure of the office of the attorney general is deficient, the statutory structure.
All right. Well, those are the cases that I'm interested in. It's the cases where we've seen that the attorney general and the governor of Guam actually are on opposite sides of, of a case. For example, the gaming, the gambling gaming statute case, or rules and regs case, the licensing case, and then the ORDA landfill case. And that litigation, for years, was under the attorney general. All of a sudden, the governor's office was representing the people of Guam. And now I think you're back in the case, is that correct? Things like that. I mean, I want to be clear to the public, when will we be represented by the attorney general of Guam? When will we be represented by the governor's counsel?
The public interest, Senator, and you and I have talked about this before, that concept of public interest. It's not the interest of the agency, it's the interest of the public that the attorney general is there to preserve. And there are all kinds of nuances and fact situations. Senator, you mentioned the gambling case, we're defending against it. There's also the GRRP case, that we were representing the governor, this is before my tenure, and then the governor took a different approach on the RRRP case, and we withdrew from that. And that, that matter still continues. There are a lot of different nuances in terms of conflict, conflicts, including the gambling case. We gave a DRT advice, the licenses were invalid, and then they became valid. And we took them to court saying it's not valid. And now we're in the Supreme Court of Guam, not on the issue of whether the gambling licenses were valid or not valid, but on whether the office of the attorney general has a conflict of interest. We were here just a couple of weeks ago, and you asked a very good question, where is that gambling case? Well, we're in the Supreme Court, we're not even talking about the licenses. We're talking about the struggle between the governor's office and the attorney general's office, and who we represent. Very interesting.
That's exactly why I'm asking. I want to know if this bill will resolve those types of issues that I know that your office has really, you know, it's, we need those to be resolved. And so if this bill could help, please, yeah, I just want you to point that out. And, all right, I'm going to ask one more time if any of the senators have any question. Senator Sinocci, would you like to close or ask a question?
No, madam speaker. I just wanted to say that, you know, I enjoyed it when the attorney general said that you give legal advice, and if they don't follow it, and I'm happy you have a chief prosecutor, if they don't want to follow it, beware GovGuap Agency when they tell you not to do something, and you do it, get sued, or go to jail. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Senator Espada.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Actually, you've answered, a lot of the questions were asked, and I believe they've been answered. And when we start taking a look at the bigger scope and the bigger perspective of really the role, which is the question before, the role of the attorney general in our community, you know, for our island, and what is, what do they protect? I think you, you've been very articulate on the concern that you raise. And I suppose I, in my mind, Madam Attorney General, we all know that these will be your last few months. So a lot of the recommendations that you're putting forward, as you had stated, was really in the mission of what you had when you came in, and that's to make the office stronger, and so they can carry out its mission of both prosecution and protecting the public interest. And so it'd be hard to find, I guess, self-interest at this point, right, in the recommendations that you're making, because they seem to address going forward, really, the substance, you know, to create some substance, and as you mentioned, the foundation of the office of the attorney general. I did have some questions, but you had answered it. One of them was, if we go down this road, one of the issues that was brought up was the whole issue of procurement. And I know we danced around that a little bit here and there, we all danced around it. But in the end, the whole issue was really to create more autonomy and independence for the office to be able to, I guess, project that this is the legal office of the government. This is, this is it. But for the most part, in trying to understand the bigger point, or the broader perspective, I have, I have support for a lot, a lot of the things that are in this bill. There might be a few things that we could talk about, you know, if we tweak this, tweak that. Because one issue, say for example, it seemed to be an area that we talked about for several minutes, right, was the whole procurement issue. And I understand the issue of being able to hire and enter into contracts and whatnot. However, on the flip side, the concern was, well, really, we're going to exempt you from buying paper and pens through GSA? Minor. In the bigger scope of things, it's minor. But it does have some significance in terms of defining the independence of the office of the attorney general. So that's something I think we're all going to have to debate in our head. Is it worth fighting over? Or is it, does it really belong as part of the overall scheme in the policy going forward to try to strengthen the office of the attorney general? The other question I had in my head that was answered, for the most part, is, you know, okay, if you go into this whole procurement, be able to do your own procurement, do you have the personnel to do that full-time? Is that what? Is that what it's going to require? You did mention you have it in your systems already, and, of course, because you are the legal advice to any of the agencies who are looking at procurement contracts, right, even if they do go through GSA, they seek your advice, so who else better than to understand the procurement process and in accordance with the law, the existing law? So I, I understand that. And again, it was just the personnel costs, if that's anything, but we all know now with automation, it's a lot easier. I guess one of the concerns is you go through the procurement costs. When it comes to DOA, DOA is still the ones who cut the checks, though, and so there's not a guarantee there that even though we give you that kind of autonomy and independence, that you'll be able to operate effectively the way you think you, you can.
Well, we would, when the Attorney General's Office, and I'm hoping the next Attorney General moves forward with procuring a full financial system, so we would be off of DOA, so the procurement and payment to vendors would be solely within the Office of the Attorney Similar to Department of Education and the other autonomous agencies who have their own financial systems, do their independent procurement and pay their vendors accordingly.
Yeah, well, let me just ask you this, and, I don't know, it's just a thought that came into my mind right now, does that weaken the GSA in any way? Or, you know, in, in the overall picture, again, the concern was, well, once we start sparsing out certain agencies or instrumentals of the government, right, then all of a sudden there may not be that same effectiveness, or maybe even the volume buying that might, and the cost saving, the resulting cost savings from going through a central procurement point, would that negatively affect the rest of the government in terms of the costs?
I, I honestly don't know the answer. I think it's a very, very good question. The executive line agencies are, it's huge, and every executive line agency, I think even including the Guam Memorial Hospital, they are not exempted from, I think their independent procurement was taken away from them, they go through GSA. Senators, I know we're dancing around the question of how to make GSA better. I, I totally agree with you, but maybe, maybe another day, another time to talk about how to improve our central procurement, but I would have to say that if I can encourage to this body to understand that the Office of the Attorney General understands a law of procurement very, very well, and to give us, in addition to our financial and personnel autonomy, our procurement autonomy is consistent, but to have financial autonomy, personnel autonomy, and not procurement autonomy is kind of like leaving, leaving something to the side that, that does not give the position, the Office, the independence and autonomy that I suggest that this body is looking towards. Congress didn't tell us what kind of AG, and so the burden is on your good experience, your knowledge, and, and your decision as to what kind of Attorney General to have. And Senator Espada, thank you, this is my swan song. I, I'd like to take the, all the experience I've had of being Attorney General as an appointed, and all my years of government experience in the three branches of government to at least make an, an effort in Bill 317. I, I don't say it's perfect, I don't have all the answers, I hope I've been able to provide the answers, but we've got to, to move forward with establishing this position in a different way, because what I think happened before it was, here we have an appointed AG, just erase or cross out appointed, and now put the word elected, and in the books, the Office of the Attorney General is still called the Department of Law, that was a line agency. And so we, we need to move away from the Department of Law as a line agency to the Department of Law as an independent and autonomous Office of the Attorney General for the people of Guam. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Attorney General. The second item on our agenda is Bill 316-34, which was introduced by Senator Joseph Augustine. Signed up to testify is, again, the Attorney General, Elizabeth Barrett Anderson. I'd like to invite Senator Sinocci to introduce the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. A bill number 316-34, an act to add a new Article III to Title V, Chapter 30, Guam Code Annotated, relative to copyrights and publication rights. This is for legal treatise?
Treatise.
Okay. I'll get two attorneys to tell me how to really pronounce it, but that's okay. Or publication that the Office of Attorney General develops. Will protect the intellectual property of the Office of the Attorney General. The treaties will provide up-to-date analysis of court decisions based on topics, because it is created locally, updates on all decisions will be accessible quicker. There is no current local database or publication that really identifies other court decisions by topic. There'll be a source of revenue, and it preserves government work. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Senator, I mean, I'm sorry, we'll allow the Attorney General to testify, please.
All right, thank you very much again, Madam Chair, and members of the committee. Thank you again to the sponsor of the bill for introducing this. In a, in a time of economic downturn, our Office is looking for ways to generate revenue in a reasonable manner. You do have a written statement from our chief prosecutor, Deputy Attorney General Joe McDonald, and he posed this issue to my attention about a year ago. We had some senior law clerks in our office, these are graduated attorneys who are waiting admission to the bar in order to practice, and they were assigned to review all of Guam Supreme Court decisions with regard to criminal cases and criminal matters, and to compile those cases, to do annotations to them, so that those, or that information could be easily referred to and referenced by every prosecutor. And Senators, as you know, the Prosecution Division is a revolving door, it has a high turnover, so being able to have access, ready access, to a compilation of criminal decisions from the Guam Supreme Court was very, very important. Also, when I became Attorney General, I was aware that in the Civil Division, there was an effort by some attorneys to pull together the opinions, and although the compiler of laws has given reference or copies, as the legislature is, of every Attorney General opinion, they are not annotated, meaning they are not referenced by topic. You'd have to know what you're looking for, or you'd have to know what agency the opinion may have been issued, and it could be 10, you know, 20 years ago. Very recently, Senator, Madam Speaker, you referenced the hiring freeze. There was an opinion in 2012 that we, that one of the attorneys was aware of, and that opinion was pulled up, and that opinion was the basis upon which I issued my opinion just the other day, I think it was yesterday, that the language in the budget law's hiring freeze was inorganic. So in addition to the development of pulling together the decisions of, in criminal cases for the Supreme Court, we also, from the civil side, would like to do so with regard to opinions and possibly other civil cases. Senators, wouldn't it be nice to have a journal published maybe every two years or every five years of opinions from the Office of the Attorney General, you know, 2015 to 2020, and they're in a journal, and someone can just pull them up? I know that would be very helpful to the legislature. So the, the effort of the Office of the Attorney General and all the legal matters and legal issues that come through our office could be developed into treatises, treatises in journals, and a compilation of our local case law, both Supreme Court, we'd like to expand it to the Superior Court, so that they are easily researchable. This is a project, it is, hasn't gotten off the ground, but with this piece of legislation, it's allows that when the project comes to fruition, then the journals could be made available and, and sold and copyrighted for the government of Guam, copyrighted for the government of Guam, and that the revenue and the cost returns to the Office of the Attorney General that developed the treatise or the journal. And that's all I have. By the way, the publications and distribution, if we could return, I don't believe it's going to generate a lot of money, but it might be able to generate enough to keep projects going for publications, so I can see the, any costs that the AG's Office receives, that it would just be pumped back into more publications and more publications. I would love to purchase an Office of the Attorney General opinions, and we can go backwards in time and have, you know, like from 19 whatever to 1995, 1996 to 2000, so it can be easily referenced and catalogued in terms of topic.
All right. I want to thank you for your testimony, and I, I commend the efforts in this bill to, to look at ways that the Attorney General's Office could produce revenue, and to use its, its, its brain power to do that.
I had the same word in my mind, brain power.
It's, it's commendable. I was, I, I have a couple of questions, and one is, I know that the Attorney General opinions, when you start to talk about that, I didn't think that would be covered in this bill, in this treaty, so I thought it would be the laws and, and the court of opinions and by topic. I think it's very helpful for lawyers, I would love that. I think we've had to do that in our own practices, right, to get along, so it's a very great idea. As for the Attorney General opinions, currently, they're, they're mandated to be published by the compiler, and who also is mandated to publish opinions, and, but to make them searchable, not necessarily indexed by topic, and that's really been for, for AG opinions, for me especially, when I was counsel at the legislature, that was a big challenge. I felt like, how can an agency operate without having all the AG guidance in front of it, you know, at one shot? Over all the years, what have you said about hiring, right? How is this special hiring provision interpreted by the Attorney General's Office over all the years? Because supposedly, as a Senator now, when I try to pursue this, for example, DOA, they will always say, you know, it's, it's practiced based on, you know, what the Attorney General has told us and the advice we've received from the Attorney General, but it makes sense to me, in many agencies, that they would want all of that compiled. So I, I'm going to run this by the compiler to ensure what
Thank you.
Which parts she will be able to do and give to us for free, hopefully. Compilations are free from her, they're, they're searchable, they're just not organized by topic necessarily. However, I want to give a lot of credit to the Guam Law Library, because that's what, that's what they have done manually over the years. They've taken Attorney General opinions and indexed them by topics, and when I found that, that was a treasure for me, because I didn't think that was widely known, and it's by topic. Over the years, they've been adding every Attorney General opinion in there by topic, and so, but that's, that was manual back then, you'd have to go there, search through their binders and, you know, to see the index, but, but I think those are things that they could put online, but, and then, so as for the compiling and maybe the journaling, I'm not sure, but definitely the treatising. I'm very interested in that. I think that's really where your, your skills and your, your understanding of the law is going to be very, very important. I'm curious that the prosecutor would want to sell those to defense attorneys, but, all right, but no, I commend you for the efforts in this bill. Could you, for the record, please, just, there's a section here, 30304, that says, privileged legal treatise. It says the treatises under this, created pursuant to this article are privileged unless such privilege is expressly waived.
Senator, could I get back to you specifically on that? I, I apologize. Okay, all right, Joe, Joe might be able to, thank you, Joe.
Madam Chair, I'd like to be recognized, Joe McDonald, Chief Prosecutor.
Thank you.
So the, the privilege is because in some recent decisions by the Supreme Court opinions, they indicated the extent to which the Office enjoys privilege. So since these are works that are meant for proprietary right, we would like the privilege to continue until such time that the proprietary, proprietary rights are sold or that kind of thing. So it's more to protect the, the privilege in the works themselves without having them waived necessarily.
All right. And your work product, in other words, to hold it, they can't demand exposure of that in a court case or anything.
Let's not forget, we got FOIA, right? We got that kind of stuff, so we'd like to make sure that it's not going to be subject to, okay, show me your drafts, show me this, you got to give it to me, all I have to pay is 10 cents per copy. This retains the privilege and the proprietary rights and the works of the attorneys working on this, until such time are ready to sell it to you.
All right. Is there anything, this would allow that the Attorney General's Office receives any profit that might be made, or to reimburse, get reimbursed for costs?
Well, we're hoping it makes profit.
Good.
Well, I guess we call it surplus in the government.
All right. Is there anything to prevent anyone else from doing this, private sector?
No.
Not necessarily, right?
Not necessarily.
So I just wanted to point that out, but, okay.
I would like to also just comment, let's not forget, we do know the compiler compiles the laws, compiles the decisions, makes these public, those are primary sources. Those are the actual case opinions, those are the actual laws that this fine legislature has passed. What we're talking about is, what does this all mean to somebody within 30 seconds while I'm at court, and I need to understand exactly where this law is going? I think that would be a valuable resource for practitioners.
Yes, I agree. Senator Sinocci? Senator Espada?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it's an excellent thing, I want to buy one right now. I, I believe it's going to be very interesting, I mean, and I, I think, Mr. McDonald, you did answer, answer the concern, or at least speak to the concern of, it was said in more in a joking manner, but in a lighthearted manner, right, you'd be willing to sell these to, you know, defense attorneys, and again, that's why I do understand your explanation on the whole privileged aspect of this, on, on the subsection we're discussing, privileged legal treatises. So I appreciate that. I, I think it's an excellent idea, and I wholeheartedly support it.
We have a walking treatise right now, his name is James Collins. He told me the other day, he's done 35 appeals.
Oh, kidding.
So we have an automatic resource, however, Mr. Collins is not going to be at the Office forever, so we need to impart that knowledge to successive attorneys, Assistant Attorneys General, who litigate daily and have a working piece of, and, and an evergreen sort of product for the practice to continue, and let's not also, let's also not forget, sometimes you might have a decision in one court that conflicts with a decision in the other court.
Yes.
So we would, you know, I, I understand that, of course, judges have great discretion, so that's a natural process, I want to make sure that I am on the record saying that, but at least we get to see, okay, across the courts, this is how this issue, the individual judges, how this issue has been handled, and then the, the attorney who's, has access, immediate access to that information can much more easily apply the law to the facts.
I, I have to say that I think it's going to be helpful to judges, to know whether their brethren, judges of the other courts, have, have ruled on this issue as well. I, I've done so, and I've taken guidance from a couple of other judges who have gone in this direction, and I, it's good, and for me not to know that, because we're so busy, I think this type of information being available is also helpful to judges, so.
I think it's an excellent idea. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
I'm wondering if you can expand it to the boards and agencies, for example, Guam Election Commission, right? So they've had their private counsel, they hire counsel over all these years, and they've gotten gotten opinions on many interpretations of election law. And so when I was going to run for office, I wanted to know, well, how do they interpret this section? And I wanted an easy source of all the different interpretations of it over the years, because I think their councils also might have changed their interpretation, right? Or I wanted to see that.
Yeah, I think something like this would go a long way to making sure that laws are uniformly applied.
Yes, appreciate that. Okay, closing statement, Senator? All right, well, I want to thank you again, Chief Prosecutor, and thank you for your good work, and Madam Attorney General, thank you very much. We are proceeding now to Bill Number 311, the last agenda item. It is also introduced by Senator Sinagastin, and I'd like to invite him to introduce the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Bill Number 311-34, An Act to Amend Section 30106H of Article I, Chapter 30, Title V, Guam Code annotated relative to the position of Chief of Staff for the Office of the Attorney General. The Chief of Staff is an important position to any elected office, including the Attorney General. An elected AG should have a Chief of Staff who can coordinate and carry out the general directives as well as oversee the administrative division. The Chief of Staff serves as the division head for administrative divisions, supervises administrative sections that supports the agency and employee, human resource, finance, and payroll, and federal grants. The role includes overseeing finance, budgeting, budget, accounts payable, contract, lease management, payroll procurement, annual procurement plans, review and coordinate government-related circulars, personnel, including post requirements and policies for law enforcement personnel, recruitment, federal grants, data collections and analysis, strategic planning, information technology efforts, annual reports, citizen-centric reports, compact impact reporting, language access plans, equal employment opportunity reports, public information and outreach, record management, coordinate witness travel for charged case, draft policies, and comply with legislative mandates such as preparation and website posting of staffing patterns and financial reports, non-employee travel reports, and et cetera. The Chief of Staff can be designated as the agency's certifying officer, as the current AG has been doing. The Chief of Staff can oversee the development of long-range strategic plans and federal grants, and ensure that these plans are coordinated internally and with other agencies, government and non-government organizations. The position differs greatly from that of a chief deputy attorney general who oversees deputy AGs and legal matters, creates efficiency for the operation of the department. Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Attorney General, did you want to submit testimony on this?
If I could just give oral testimony and follow with written testimony, Madam Speaker just came back from off island, and I'd like to be able to provide written, may I comment on the bill?
Yes, please proceed, yes.
Okay. When I took over as Attorney General, the office had significantly grown in personnel and responsibilities, and I knew how important it was to have a chief administrative person, chief of staff, to assist in my tenure. The chief of staff position does not exist, and that responsibility has historically fallen on the chief deputy attorney general. I chose not to hire a chief deputy attorney general, because I expected my attorneys general, deputy attorneys general, and assistant attorneys general to work hard. You see those deputies back there? They work, they're all responsible for helping me manage the legal affairs of the Office of the Attorney General. But on the administrative arena, the office was deficient. Under 4201 of Title IV, the second-in-command position by whatever name, by whatever name, is what I used in order to bring a chief of staff onboard as an unclassified employee. And with that position, we have been able to build the strengths of the Office of the Attorney General administratively. We have a personnel division, we have a federal grants position, we have a financing section, and we also have a MIT computer section. So the chief of staff was very instrumental, and I hope that the next Attorney General recognizes how important it is to have a chief of staff, because the Attorney General has a lot on his or her plate. The deputy attorneys generals assist with all those legal issues. But with regard to certification of funds, management of personnel finances, computers, everything involved in a 200-personnel-plus agency, we are a medium-sized agency, I ask this body to give the next Attorney General a position in and of itself of chief of staff. All right, thank you very much.
Senator Sinagastin?
No, not at this moment.
Senator Espaldon? I just had one question, and this is, I'm not sure, have you seen the fiscal note that was prepared by BBMR? So we received a fiscal note on this bill by BBMR, and I'm going to read it. It says, "The Office of Attorney General currently has a filled unclassified chief of staff position. The chief of staff is listed as a first assistant. The staffing pattern does not reflect a chief deputy AG position." The fiscal note goes on to state that "the bill will allow AG the ability to hire a chief deputy AG and keep its chief of staff position that appears to be filled in lieu of the chief deputy AG. The BBMR is concerned whether or not another position is warranted and justified." Do you have any comment on that?
With regard to their last statement, whether it's warranted or justified, I think that kind of exceeds BBMR's jurisdiction. They are correct financially. I am concerned with establishing the position. The budget is very, very tight, and BBMR is correct. Will the next Attorney General be able to hire a chief deputy and a chief of staff? I'm not too sure. The chief deputy position is not currently funded. The chief of staff position is funded, because that was in lieu of a chief deputy. With the financial management for the next Attorney General, and the final three quarters of FY '19, with vacancies occurring, with lapses occurring in personnel, perhaps the next Attorney General will be able to hire both. My position to BBMR is, that is the responsibility of the Attorney General, not to exceed his or her budget. Not BBMR to say what positions the AG's office should or shouldn't have, but to hold, you know, accountable that the Attorney General's office cannot exceed its appropriation. And I recognize that, I respect that, and I would encourage the next Attorney General to live within your budget.
All right, the Attorney General's office has administrative positions, is that correct? There are other administrative officers in the Attorney General's office?
Yes, yes.
You've got finance now, and you've got personnel. What about, so the law is adding the language that the Attorney General may appoint an unclassified chief of staff, but according to BBMR, you've already been able to do that, and so why is this law necessary?
I'm perhaps an unusual Attorney General that I did not need a chief deputy. Some of you may have remembered in my tenure as an appointed Attorney General, for eight years, I did have a chief deputy, and I was taught well. I did not need a chief deputy Attorney General. That was my decision. The next Attorney General may want to have a chief deputy Attorney General, and if so, under the current statutory scheme, will not be able to have a chief of staff. I am suggesting to the legislature that both should be made available to the Attorney General.
So you're saying that the current statute prohibits the hiring of a chief of staff and a deputy?
Concurrently, yes. The chief of staff in my office is in lieu of a chief deputy.
Well, the current statute says, "The Attorney General may appoint an attorney as chief deputy Attorney General, who shall be the officer referred to in 4GCA 4102A5, unclassified service." So that officer is authorized by law. It said nothing about a chief of staff, but you were able to hire one?
Mm-hmm. 4201 indicates also that the second-in-command by whatever title, by what, whether it's a deputy or a vice, so I don't have the statute in front of me.
So you intend that?
So I knew that you could not have a chief deputy and a chief of staff concurrently.
All right, because you want this person to be the officer referred to in 4GCA 4102A5, one or the other? Is that right? Or are you saying now we should have two referred to as that officer?
The next Attorney General should be able to hire a chief of staff under 4201, as well as to be able to hire an unclassified chief of staff under 3106B.
Okay. I'm going to look at that more, but I'm confused, because if you've been able to hire one, why do we need to put that in the statute? It seems to exist in your staffing pattern, but, all right, I'll look at that 4102A5.
Senator, be mindful also, this is unclassified, unclassified.
All right. Also, my colleague read a list of things that this person would be responsible for. Is that something formal, is there a job description that includes those items? Or should we include that in the bill? Or how does that, how do we, how do we describe that position?
I guess I would suggest that it not be included in legislation. I would like to permit the next Attorney General with the chief of staff to be able to expand that person's duties as an unclassified employee. We have a list that we suggested to Senator Sinagastin of what that person could do, but perhaps the next Attorney General might want to take language access and give it to another person, or might want to take preparation of the criminal, the CCR, the Citizen Centric report, and give that to another person. These are all administrative responsibilities that the current chief of staff, as an example, can do for the Attorney General, while the chief deputy Attorney General can assist in the management of the legal affairs of a 60-personnel law firm. So I see the legal aspect and the administrative aspect as two important components for the elected Attorney General. When you have the chief deputy Attorney General handling, signing all of the payroll, all of the certification, all of the billings that come in, on top of assisting the Attorney General on the legal issues, that's a tremendous responsibility. So I'm asking the legislature to afford the next Attorney General to have both unclassified types of positions, the chief of staff and the chief deputy Attorney General.
All right, in order to fill the position currently, was there a job description, or is there anything like that?
No.
All right. And so the fiscal impact according to BBMR is $99,000 now?
Yes.
All right. What is the deputy, chief deputy AG position? I guess the salary is based on years, or is it set?
No, it's, you know, that's a very good question. I don't know if any of my staff behind me might be able to answer that. I do know that the Attorney General position is set at $128,000. I'm not sure, under the Competitive Wage Act, I'm not taking that 128, I'm taking the earlier one. I'm not certain, but I think possibly the Competitive Wage Act also sets the chief deputy Attorney General position. The deputy positions are not set by Competitive Wage Act, and they are set by the negotiation of the Attorney General in appointing deputy attorneys general. But we do have the general Competitive Wage Act attorney levels of 1, 2, 3, and 4. So there's a guideline for deputies and chief deputies.
Okay. All right, so I wasn't aware of a subject to negotiation.
There's a guideline, it's not just you pull from the air. So an attorney four starts at level one of $75,000, and it goes up to step 20. So the Attorney General, and asking some assistant Attorney General to step up to the bat. Now, the Attorney General could hire somebody from the outside. My attorneys, my deputies are classified attorneys who have stepped up to the deputy positions, and for the joy of managing their divisions and their personnel, and the joy of having to deal with the Attorney General's problems day in, day out, I offered them, within the step level of attorney four, some additional salary. Upon my leaving the Office of the Attorney General, my deputies will tender, and all unclassified employees, my chief of staff, as well as my assistant Attorney General, will tender their courtesy resignations to the next Attorney General, and two people will, if they are not kept on, will not have a job, and the deputy attorneys generals will reassume their positions as classified assistant attorneys general.
All right. Well, thank you. I wanted to just note, I'm asking this question, but I have worked with your chief of staff, and I've worked with your office, and I've worked with all the deputies here in, over the last year and a half, and I want to commend all of you, because I think your office is very organized, and it's able to accomplish things that it sets out to do. So I want to commend all of you on that, and really has represented Guam very well. So I want to thank you for that, and I want to thank all the deputies that are here, and chief of staff, and everyone.
I will miss this team, Senator. I will sorely miss this team when the next Attorney General raises his hand and takes the oath. I want to let you know that I'm hoping to develop a very smooth transition for the incoming Attorney General. I hope the pieces of legislation that have been proposed to the legislature, as Senator Espaldon said, I have no self-interest in this. I do have a love for this office, I've come back to it another time. Senator Sinagastin, your dad said to me, "Hafaliz, did you forget something that you had to come back?" I loved that statement from him. These bills and these pieces of legislation will help to strengthen the Office of the Attorney General on behalf of the people of Guam. Thank you very much, Senators.
All right, I want to thank you, everyone, again, for attending and for the public's attention to this, and for the testimony that you have provided this morning. This committee will continue to remain open for the acceptance of any additional information or public testimony on any agenda items discussed. You may submit testimonies to my office directly here at the Guam Congress Building at 163 Chalan Santopapa Agatna, 96910, or to the mailroom of the Guam Legislature in our building here, or through email at senatorsterlahiguam@gmail.com. Public hearing is now adjourned. Time is 10:52. Jesus Massey.